My buddy Neil's early.
Velma, I'm not able to get in, but... ITS Velma, is this ITA- IT space then guest? Is it all one word?
All one word.
Boy, this is an early turnout. Everybody's just ready to go today. Got a new year going and...
The Armenians, they know how quick they're over.
Turf and Town though, might run a little longer now.
Uh-huh. This is accounting time.
(laughing). That's true, huh?
Good morning. Welcome to our first meeting of 2018, Wednesday, January tenth. We'll begin with a roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Yeah.
Diaz.
Here.
Wilatch.
Here.
Pique Liano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) the flag of the United States of America and for the Republic from which it stands, on the nation under God, indivisible, with the very essence of its essence.
Okay, at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comment at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. At all times, please use a microphone, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wanting to address the commission? Seeing none, then we shall continue. Item number three, approval of the minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Through the chair, we have a correction on page five, seven B was to vote yourself. It's the chair and not John Elliott. That's the only change we have.
Thank you, Aaron.
Page five. Oh, on the, on the minutes?
On the minutes.
I got another term there.[230.02][230.12](laughing).
Anything else?
I'd make the motion that we accept the minutes for December thirteenth, twenty-seventeenth with stated correction.
Second.
Roll call.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Wilatch.
Yes.
Pique Liano.
Tang.
Aguilar.
Yes. Item number four, parcel map, public hearings. Action on parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any of these items unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items.
Through the chair, item, the applicant has requested that item four A be polled and removed to date certain, February twenty-third.
Any other motion on that, or is that...
Yes, please.
I think a motion, we move, uh, move item four B to February...
Four A.
Four A.
Four A.
Four A.
Four A to a time certain, February, what's the date again?
Twenty-third.
February what?
Twenty-third. Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
I second that motion.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Wilatch.
Yes.
Pique Liano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes. So that leaves item B for tentative parcel map number PPM seventeen dash zero four four. We will open the public hearing at this time. If there's anybody wishing to comment on this. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on this item and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guideline pursuant to the Title XIV California Code Regulation, Section one five three oh three, Class Three pertaining to the new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM one seven dash zero four four and a waiver of final map.
Second. Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Wilatch.
Yes.
Pique Liano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes. We'll move on to item number five. Item five A is a special use permit number PSP seventeen dash zero seven eight. A presentation.
Good morning, Furman Aguilar, commissioners. This project is a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP seventeen dash zero seven eight. And this is to allow a commercial dog kennel on a six-point-eight acre property which is located north of Exeter. Project is categorically exempt from Sequer pursuant to Section one five three zero one, Class One pertaining to existing facilities. Entitlement found in Section sixteen of the Ordinance three fifty-two which allows kennels for commercial breeding, boarding, training, or other commercial purposes in the AE forty zone upon approval of a special use permit. This is the location and property ownership map. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff did receive one inquiry from a nearby neighbor regarding the project. And she did express some concerns about noise that the dogs would make. Be here to provide some further testimony. The project is located in the Rural Valley Lands Plan and the land use designation is Valley Agriculture. The project was found to be consistent with the general plan. The applicable policies. And this is the vicinity map. Project is located on the north side or the south side of Lort Drive and approximately three-quarters of a mile east of Road one eighty-two and two and a half miles north of Exeter. Zoning map. Project is located in the AE forty zone and contains a single-family residence and a detached garage. The surrounding properties are all zoned AE forty and contain mostly rural residences and agriculture. And the site has access directly to Lort Drive. This is the aerial photograph. The applicant is requesting this special use permit for the commercial dog kennel for primarily dog training and boarding purposes. And this is a six-point-eight acre parcel. And mostly, see that most of the parcel is pasture. This is the residential area here. The site plan. The applicant, Ms. Corso, plans to make the primary use of this property a dog training facility. She proposes to finish the interior of the twelve-hundred square foot garage and turn it into an indoor dog kennel, training facility complete with its own HVAC system. This building will serve as a primary housing for the dogs that are under her care. The existing residents would serve as a caretaker house and as an office. The services provided are expected to include private and group training classes, board and training, doggy daycare, and overnight boarding. Ms. Corso expects to be able to accommodate up to fifty dogs at any one time. Incidental to this use, she may also occasionally breed a litter of puppies. Dog waste will be, you know, picked up on a regular basis and collected through the regular trash collection services. The more recent aerial photo. This is the residence here and the garage is here. The streetside view of the property. The dog kennel will not have any formal operating hours. Clients may come to the site for drop-off and/or pickup services and for classes on an appointment-only basis. Otherwise, the front, front gate would be kept closed and locked at all times. And this facility would be available three hundred sixty-five days a year. The applicant expects to employ up to three persons at any given time to assist with the care and training of the dogs. And she has requested some signage on the east and west side of the driveway, on the fence, some banner-style signage and possibly a business identification sign at front entrance to the driveway. And that's staff report. Staff is recommending that your commission approve the categorical exemption and conditionally approved special use permit PSP seventeen dash zero seven eight. Questions?
You know, you say the, it sounds like then all these dogs will be held in, inside. Is that correct?
That is the plan, yes.
Maybe I can ask the applicant, but is the facility ready for them now, or are they gonna have to...
No, she's going to have to modify the garage.
I have some questions too, maybe if the applicant is here, maybe.
The applicant is here.
At this time, we will open the public hearing. Want to step forward? Name and address, please.
Good morning, I'm Rebecca Corso.
Address.
Sorry?
Address.
My current address is two four zero nine North Oak Grove Court in Visalia.
And the question I had was, is breeding a part of this operation?
At the moment, it's not. We have possible plans for very, very small scale. I, I train service dogs as well. So we currently have one golden retriever and we would like to maybe have one litter a year or something like that just to help provide some golden retriever puppies for some of my service dog clients, but that is absolutely it.
What about, is the building heated or air-conditioned or...
Not at the moment. It's just a kind of a shell. But we, we are almost ready with a building permit. We've been in contact with everybody that we need to be in contact with and we have contractors ready to put in a HVAC system and finish out the building so that it will be completely temperature-controlled.
That's good. I, I like the location. I think I could work there and it's certainly needed, so.
Thank you.
I just have a few questions. Thank you.
We, we had, we heard testimony or statement that there might be a concern with the noise level in your remodeling and, have you done anything or considered mitigating the noise level in your reconstruction of this barn?
Yeah, absolutely. We've considered it and that's the number one reason we're keeping all the dogs inside. They will be kept in crates because my primary business is dog training. We hope to never have to use this place for doggy daycare or, or commercial kenneling at all. Excuse me, I'm not feeling well right now. But, so when I train dogs, a lot of people send them to me for like a month at a time for a variety of training requests, whether it be service dogs or potty training or behavior, you know, concerns. And so I, I keep them in dog crates and then we rotate them throughout the day out of dog crates. So it's not kennels, it's not outdoor kennels. We don't want them barking all day inside the building or outside the building. I have a family member and full-time staff member living in the house. I don't want her to listen to dogs barking all day. I certainly don't want my neighbors listening to barking all day. And at some point, my husband and three children, we also want to live out there on the property. We don't want to listen to barking all day. And so, you know, we, with the insulation and being inside of a building that's, you know, on several acres, we don't anticipate the neighbors being able to hear barking, certainly not at night. During the daytime, we will be rotating dogs supervised only in a couple of different training yards that we're planning on. And so the occasional daytime barking may happen. But to be honest, in the few weeks that we've owned the property, we've heard neighbors' dogs barking most of the day and horses, and there's also a train that runs right by the property. So I don't anticipate it being any more intrusive than what's already out there.
Where do you plan on housing the, the owners to train them?
(laughing) We charge extra for that.
That's usually the problem. The dogs find...
I need to go there. Could I see the picture again? What I want to see is the housing. Do you have a... What's close? What's the closest house? Is that that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And...
Just kind of wanted to get it in my head. Thank, thank you.
Any other questions?
That's good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide any testimony?
Name is Fred Klausner, River, directly on the east, one eight eight two three, Lort Drive. And my daughter is the one that called, but she's unable. We live with her, have two small grandsons and small dogs. Originally, when my daughter looked up website, it mentioned that they train aggressive dogs. And that's why she called and was concerned about that. In the meantime, they've changed the wording on that website where it doesn't say the aggressive dog part. But my concern is, you know, with the grandsons, we just, the house is only fifty feet from their property line. So if there is a fence, is also are they gonna put concrete or something underneath to keep dogs from digging out? And then the noise thing too. You know, we, we moved out there because we didn't want to be in the city anymore with parking dogs. But mainly, my issue is the safety concern. And is she still gonna take aggressive dogs? And that's my concern.
Thank you. Would you like to address that question?
Thank you for your concern. My website...
Say your name again, please.
Sorry, Rebecca Corso. I do work with aggressive dogs. It still says that on my website. I'm a certified behavior consultant. I have a master's degree in zoology and I hold multiple independent certifications in canine behavior consulting. Most of the aggressive dogs that I work with are in-home, meaning I go to the owner's homes to treat those dogs. For the most part, they do not come to, come to do board and train, okay, for that exact reason. Usually, they're too aggressive. They, they won't even let me in the door, so they can't come to a board and train facility. But as far as any dogs that we have in our care, we've already started putting up fencing and we take safety of highest concern both for neighbors, neighbors' livestock, neighbors' children, as well as the dogs that are in my care. I don't want coyotes. You know, we've been out there. We've already seen a number of neighbors or stray dogs running through the property. We don't want them coming onto the property and hurting the dogs in my care either. So we've already been putting up six-foot chain link. And we'll be making it so that I am, you know, a hundred percent sure they, they can't get out and nothing can get in. As well as, like I said, they will be supervised a hundred percent of the time when they're outside. We are not going to be letting these dogs run loose, you know, in these yards for hours at a time to get up to no good or to dig or anything like that. They're always gonna be supervised by an accomplished trainer or caretaker. And so I don't have any concerns as far as that's concerned. I have a very good reputation in this area. I have five-star reviews. And I want to keep it that way and I also want to keep good neighbors. I have no intention. I've tried to meet most of the neighbors since we've owned the place in the last few weeks. I've met about five of them. Obviously, I haven't met all of them and I apologize for that. But we really, really take it seriously. We want to keep good relationships with the neighbors. And so I can assure you, I don't intend on letting any dogs escape.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
My name is Michael Chauvelier. I'm living on eighteen six zero five Avenue three zero four, south of this property. We have concerns, okay, first of all, we love dogs. We keep our dogs under control. First of all, we are interested to know. But we heard the dogs, up to fifty dogs on this property, on the relatively small housing area, what happens on the rest of the property? Is it probably, will they probably extend this facility and use the whole facility with more dogs? And while we, our practice of over fifty years of dog ownership, we have concerns that this is way too loud and the area is almost a dense housing area because the closest neighbors are over the street, but they are also affected. And we, we have the concern that this is not, they cannot keep this under control especially because the lady who wants to run it, she doesn't live on this property or she will not live on the property as we understood. Only people who take care of that. So we think it's way too, way too many dogs held there. And what are they doing during the day? They keep it during the day also in the building. We cannot believe that, who will control this after they get the permit?
Could I ask a question of you, sir? Sir? I'd like to ask a question of you. As a rural property owner, do you own, do you own a dog?
We own, we own dogs, yeah.
Well, you know, and that's it. I'm, I'm from Three Rivers. We almost all have dogs.
Yeah.
And the thing is, the one good thing about living where we do is our dogs can run free a little bit at times without being restrained. The idea with a kennel is they're supervised a hundred percent of the time. So I think the problems you might encounter are mainly because your dogs are just used to kind of roam in the neighborhood and there's gonna be other dogs that could attract them to that property. So I think the key is that we need to ensure under this, and I think that's what she's trying to tell us, is that the dogs are supervised one hundred percent of the time. And that, that's important and I, I think it's actually a pretty good operation.
My experience is supervisor will not calm down fifty dogs which are barking. You cannot give the dog the command if they are, especially when they are in training or, also stop barking or... Well, the idea to have fifty dogs on one property there and as far as we learned, this is a more, a larger commercial operation. They will start or have already kennels in other areas, so... I, we don't think this is the right spot for, for something like that, okay? And I still don't know will the be, will be the dogs during the day in the open or not? Will they use the whole property or not? This is what probably will happen after they get the permit.
Thank you. I don't think you brought up any additional items to bring the applicant up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the applicant a couple of questions just to clarify. There's no mystery here. You know, I know it's not easy, but you, you have the intent of moving there at some time in the near future, future, future?
We would like to in the next couple of years, yeah. Try, we're gonna try and build a house. We looked for a year for a property that had a big enough house for all of us and that we could afford and we couldn't find it. So we found this and we, we made an alternate plan. But like I said, our, our niece and my full-time salaried manager's gonna be living there in the meantime. And so we're gonna try and get out there as fast as we can.
Say fifty dogs, that's like a maximum, but in reality, how many dogs do you think you'll have at any one time?
In reality, I, I would expect, I'm hoping to have about twenty or thirty at a time. The fifty, you know, what this is, this whole process is new to us, applying for special use permit. But, you know, we were told to kind of think long-term. The property is seven acres. And so in thinking long-term, we went ahead and put fifty down. I don't think we can put fifty in the garage either. I don't plan to, but if it, you know, if, if business is doing great, then we will, you know, we have another six acres that we can do stuff with and then, you know, we'll have to go through the appropriate permitting at that point if we need to put up another building or hire more staff.
So if you're just taking dogs for training, you're not really boarding dogs, like if I'm going out of town, I'm, I'm not gonna drop my dog off. You're not gonna take care of it, that's correct?
Correct. We, we do not advertise ourselves currently as boarding, general boarding at all. So I don't, I hope to not have to get to that point unless, you know, the economy tanks and people don't want to spend lots of money on training their dogs for a year. Then I don't want to sit with fifty open kennels and no income. So that's kind of a backup.
So the doggy training typically takes a year to train a dog?
You know, people send their dogs to me for a different lengths of time. Usually, they send them to me for about a month. And it's, you know, sometimes it's young puppies who are needing crate training and potty training. And then, like I said, sometimes it's older dogs, you know, one-year-old labs who've had no training and are jumping and kind of out of control. And then occasionally, it's dogs with, you know, behavioral issues. But usually, they're with me for a month, maybe two.
You don't take grandchildren, do you?
Yeah.
I'll charge extra for that.[1680.81][1680.84](laughing).
I did want to make a comment about people that do this sort of business, and I know because my son worked for years in a couple of different kennel operations in the Bay Area. And there are, I mean, you've all, you all know what a horse whisperer is. There are dog whisperers too. And the thing about dogs are, when you get them in a group of dogs, they have a pack mentality. So basically, there's always an alpha dog or two in that pack. The person who's supervising those dogs gets those one or two dogs under control and all the other dogs follow along. And that's basically what I'm sure Rebecca's aware of. And the dogs do need exercise, so they'll be outside, but they'll, I think, if she truly knows what she's doing, it sounds like she does, they'll be under control.
Thank you. It, it's not in my best interest to let my client's dogs misbehave for a month when they're paying me to try and usually get them under control. So every interaction that we have with them is, keeps that in mind. It's not, you know, with a kennel situation, it's usually a little less controlled. But for us, every interaction that we have with every dog in our care, we are considering what the client wants in the long run. And so we try and reduce everything, barking, digging, all these things that the clients are complaining about. So yeah, I appreciate that comment.
Thank you. And to advise the public, you do have, you could call in if there, if you see that there's a problem with, with that permit. So whatever the turnout is. Any others wanting to speak?
My name is Lisa Wood. I live directly across the street.
My name is Lisa Wood. I live directly across the street. And I also love dogs. And I think it's a great business she's got going on. But my main concern is the resale value of my property. We have a quiet little oasis out there, and we're all very happy in our quiet neighborhood. And, and I'm just concerned that this might reduce the value of my property.
I, maybe to alleviate some of the neighbor concern, should we build some kind of inspection into this once it's operating?
Through the chair, I would suggest that we have quarterly inspections for the first year, so that we can verify that these, these things are occurring. So in our compliance monitoring, condition of approval 12, we'll, we'll build in a quarterly monitoring inspection for the first year.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Or if a neighbor calls, you'll go, you'll respond.
We would do that automatically.
Well, you get a complaint.
We send enforcement out immediately after we get a phone call.
We have a really strong code enforcement.
Very strong.
It was a fellow who was ex-law enforcement. And so...
I'm guessing what I hear is more concerns about noise suppression than the fact that the dogs are there being trained. So I guess I would, the applicant, if you're going to put a structure up and house these dogs for overnight stays, you may want to consider insulating the, the facility that you're, you're housing them in. Because at night, they could start barking for some unknown reason. And...
I think the structure is there, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, if it is, then if, if it's insulated, then great. If it isn't, then maybe that's something.
Yeah. We are planning on insulating the building.
Okay.
That's built into the, the remodeling plans.
I don't think you can stop a dog from barking ever, but the chain reaction noise suppression is probably the big issue that everyone has.
I, I don't think, you know, anyone's going to be able to hear the dogs barking in the insulated garage outside of our property. I really don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And if there are no more questions, then we can entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15301, Class 1, pertaining to existing facilities, and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 17-078.
With the, with the condition?
Add.
With the additional condition?
With the additional condition.
I second that motion.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Wulatch?
Yes.
Patiglano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Let's pass. And again, those of you who had concerns, we do appreciate you coming. And you do have access to put in a complaint if things are not going as, as per the permit. Okay, at this time, we'll go to item B, tentative subdivision tract number TSM 17-004.
Good morning, Chairman Aguilar and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner 3 from, from County's Planning and Economic Development Branch. The project is a categorical exemption and a tentative subdivision tract map, number TSM 17-004, requested by Janelle Dillon of Delano, agent of Central Valley Engineering and Surveying of Selma. It's for the division of a 160-acre parcel into eight 20-acre parcels located in the AE 20 zone. The site's on the southeast corner of Avenue 8 and Road 168, and about three and a half miles west of Richgrove. It's located outside any urban area boundary, and therefore is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan, which designates it for valley agriculture. Project is consistent with relevant elements of the, of the general plan, and is also consistent with the subdivision ordinance. And of the property and the surroundings is AE 20, exclusive agriculture, minimum 20-acre par, 20-acre acres. The site contains orchards, some res, two residences, an agricultural storage shed, and a drainage basin. And surrounding properties are also zoned AE 20 and contain agriculture. To the east and southeast are old storage facilities and ag service establishments. No conditions of approval were recommended by the fire department, environmental health, or Caltrans. It qualifies for a categorical exemption pertaining to Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. The parcels on the south side of Avenue 8 and east side of Road 168. Parcels 1 and 2 have direct access to Avenue 8. Parcels 1, 4, 5, and 8 have direct access to Road 168. Three of the parcels do not have direct access to a public road, but they do have access to a 20-foot-wide public access right-of-way along the east side of the property, which was dedicated for 1912 subdivision, Central California Farms Company subdivision. So they do have approved access to maintain public street is available, as required by the Subdivision Map Act. County Public Works recommended that a private vehicular access easement serving 3, 6, and 7 be improved to a three-parcels standard, in keeping with the existing farming operations and exception to additional improvements as recommended until building permits. Conditions of approval are included. The proposed project will not have an impact on biological resources or cultural resources. There are no species of concern on the site. The property does not have wetlands or waterways. It has been, it has been used for agriculture for decades, contains structures, and is surrounded by active agricultural uses. The notice for public hearing was provided a 10-day comment period and was mailed to surrounding property owners within 300 feet. Notice was also published in the Visalia Times Delta. No comments were received. This ends staff's report. The property owners and agent are in the audience if you have any questions.
April, this is before us as a public hearing instead of a parcel map hearing because of the number of parcels. Is that a throwaway?
Yes.
Because it's, it's within the by right zoning?
Yeah, through, through the chair. This would actually be subject to an exception that would allow it to be a parcel map under the subdivision map act if it had access to the interior parcels that we're talking about to a major road. And we have done those previously as parcel maps. But because it didn't fit the exception, it had to go through the full subdivision map act process.
I understand. Any other questions? At this time, we will, at this time, we will open public hearing. If there's anybody wouldn't, wanting to testify or bring additional information, this is your chance. It appeared that way. So we'll close the public hearing. I, I do have one question. Since this is so close to Delano, why don't we advertise in Delano instead of Visalia Times Delta? Is there...
Delta is our only adjudicated publication, publishing house now. Yeah, Times Delta's our own, only one we can use right now. So until the adjudication means printing in, in county and publishing in county. Is that correct, Mr. Elliot?
Well, that's a, a law that's on the books that obviously is archaic because we've lost so many newspapers now. So it boils down to that we're looking for a newspaper, this is what I'm told by the county, that has to have a circulation above a certain amount. And they attribute that to the Times Delta. Hopefully, people are still reading that, and I suppose they are in Visalia. But I can't see them reading it in Richgrove.
Yeah, it seems like it would be the Bakersfield Californian or...
Something.
I don't even know if the Delano record is still there, but...
Need to look at that law, that's for sure.
Okay, then at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
Through the chair, it's a recommendation to the board, just to clarify.
It's correct, it's correct in here, but in packet on agenda, it says to approve. It's actually a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. So you have to read from up on top.
Yeah, I'll make that recommendation that we, I mean, the motion that we recommend to the, to the Board of Supervisors certify and adopt a categorical exemption and conditionally approve tentative tract map number TSM 17-004.
I'll second it.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Wulatch?
Yes.
Patiglano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
This time, we go to item C, which Local Agency Management Plan.
Chairman Aguilar, Commissioners, I am Aaron Bach, Chief Planner with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. And what we have before you today is the Resource Management Agency's Proposed Local Agency Management Program. It's for onsite water treatment systems under a California Water Code. The actions requested today are to receive a presentation regarding the local area management plan, and that will be by myself and the consultant, and conduct a public hearing to accept public comment, and recommend in two motions that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors certify and adopt the statutory exemption and completion and approval of the local area management plan. And with that, I'll turn over to the consultant, who knows way more about this than I do. And she can introduce herself. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Aguilar and Commissioners. My name is Kristen McKillop. I work for Northstar and Chico. And over the last, since actually May 1st, I started working for Northstar, who actually recruited me from Butte County Environmental Health, where the previous six and a half years, I was the, the program manager for the Landes program. So I came on board in Butte County just at the time that the Board of Supervisors had, had adopted their lamp program and worked through some of the growing pains of implementing that, that program. So I can totally appreciate where you are, starting off and trying to come into compliance with the state regulation for, for onsite wastewater systems. Just to let you know, that's become common for me to refer to them as onsite. It's just septic systems. It's a, it's a fancy state term. And this is a, it's associated with a policy that they adopted initially because of the number of onsite systems throughout the state of California, under Assembly Bill 885 that came about in the early 2000s. The proposal was to provide a one-size-fits-all solution to regulating onsite systems and protecting groundwater quality. As you can imagine, you know, those of us in rural counties, those of us in Northern California, didn't really appreciate having the state telling us that we need to have regulation that is uniform across the board and that applies to Southern California and some of their issues that they experienced down there with systems adjacent to coastal communities. And so they had to go back to the drawing board after some significantly heated pitchfork-raising me, public meetings. And in May of 2013, the current policy that's in place was adopted. This is, this policy has a tiered approach to coming into compliance with state requirements. And fortunately, your staff is presenting to you an option to maintain local control here in Tulare County, rather than having the state impose their requirements and having to fall in line with that. So were it not for, for coming forward with this today and hopefully obtaining your board approval so that this can go to the state, you would, because there was only a, a five-year period to adopt this plan, that timeline runs out in May of this year. And so getting this approved today is, is of, of the essence timewise. Were you not to approve a local plan, then Tier 1 is a, a criteria established by the state that would automatically apply for the permitting of all future new systems and repairs of, of onsite systems. So the draft document that we have presented to staff is just, it's an introduction. It's in part one that outlines responsibilities and duties, and then a part two that's a, a regulation outline that talks about all of the, complying with all the requirements of state policy, and what, what the opted process is to follow Appendix H of California, 2016 California Plumbing Code. Northstar is also contracted to prepare a guidance document, and that is something that will be forthcoming, working with staff after the state approves your document, and will help assist with outlining training needs and reporting requirements and all of the things moving forward for implementation of your program. I should note that Northstar has done several of these plans throughout California, and how we've developed really good working relationships with state staff. We've moved your draft document back and forth with, you know, pushing here and pushing there and, and getting to a point where staff feels comfortable with the draft that we're presenting for adoption. And the state has tentatively, you know, let us know that they are, they are okay with the plan as it is now. These tiers that are outlined in the state policy, the Tier Zero went into effect in May of 2013 when the state policy was adopted. That was a, a blanket coverage of all existing systems, just so that they could say, okay, now everybody falls under this policy. As time moves along, we've got the option for local agencies to come into compliance under Tier 2. That allows actually for up to 10,000 gallon-per-day wastewater flow. And Tulare County has opted at this time to stick with a maximum onsite gallons per day of 3,500. That actually is a component that, that falls under Tier 1, which would be the state oversight, should you not prepare a local plan. But we also have a five-year window of annual reporting and then kind of a look back and an assessment. So in five years, you will have a report due to the state that, that allows you to either make changes, amendments, expand, and then report on, on the progress of your, your protection of groundwater quality. Tier 3 is a, is a level of compliance for areas that have 303D or impaired water body listings. They're very stringent in the requirements there. That does not apply to Tulare County. You don't have any of those impaired water bodies listed with the state. And Tier 4 is also another significantly prescriptive tier, should you fall out of compliance with what you've outlined in your local plan. The state would be able to come in and, and dictate all of the requirements for permitting new and repair systems. So again, the, the county has opted to move forward with the 3,500 gallons per day of, of wastewater, which is well, well above what a typical household use is. What we've done for you here is break down kind of a subject. What Tier 1, the most prescriptive state oversight, well, not the most prescriptive, but the optional, if the state was to come in and provide oversight for permitting systems, what 2016 Plumbing Code outlines, and then what your Tulare draft document proposes. So this is, this is a section that would be matching the Tier 1 policy. And just to let you know that Plumbing Code defines an authority having jurisdiction, and you have previously adopted the Plumbing Code, the 2016 version of Plumbing Code, and that designates the RMA as the authority having jurisdiction. RMA as the authority having jurisdiction, and therefore will have oversight of your land process. One of the changes coming for your county is due to staffing levels, current staffing levels, there is a requirement for a site evaluation and criteria to be met for soils evaluation and for system design. And in order to meet those requirements, the state has outlined, has defined for everybody what a qualified professional is. And do you have the option to kind of alter that list of who those qualified professionals are? The state does outline that California Registered Environmental Health Specialists, professional engineers, professional geologists, or soil scientists be the qualified professionals. Tulare County has also added the building official or their designee to be included in that list of qualified professionals. So these folks will go out and do your site evaluations, your system design, they will provide staff with basically reports that outline what is, what every single parcel, what every site can accept with regard to wastewater loading, what the soil classifications are, and what type of system can be installed on that parcel. They're going to look and account for all the setbacks that you currently have in place, and then one of the additional setback requirements is with regard to surface water intake points for public water systems or any public water system wells. So there's enhanced setbacks there. There's also some notification requirements that come along with that, so if a failure occurs with an onsite system, then there is a requirement for within seventy-two hours to notify that public water system. Currently, you folks have some requirements for engineering reports for stability in your mountain areas. That is also going to become a requirement should you have a proposed system anywhere where the slope is greater than thirty percent. So these site evaluations that I mentioned, there's, this is one of the elements that we went back and forth with the state on your behalf in pushing to see, you know, just how far, how far do we have to go down this road of requiring the site evaluations? There are very specific requirements spelled out in the OTS policy, and basically, there was no getting around the requirement for the site evaluation. So every single parcel now has to be evaluated, whether it's for a new system or for a repair, there has to be one of these qualified professionals, or if at some point down the road you have staffing levels that allow for staff to go out and make these initial assessments. But this is a new part of the process for you at this, once the plan is adopted. These are some, quickly, just visuals for some of these new key concepts as part of determining the suitability for having an onsite system on a parcel. And that's basically that the state is looking to adequately protect groundwater quality, but they're also realizing that, you know, the public sewer is not coming to every parcel in California, so we really need to design systems that are able to adequately treat wastewater for the long term. And so in order to do that, you need to ensure that there's adequate vertical separation, so from the bottom of your dispersal trench where affluent is dispersed, there has to be adequate separation between either a limiting layer in the soil, like a hard pan or a clay type soil. There has to be ideal aerobic conditions in the soil, there has to be proper texture and those types of things for the soil to have the water move through it, and it cannot be saturated. So anytime that you've historically had groundwater evident, part of the reason that you're doing the site evaluation and the soils test holes and looking at what's historically been there, you're looking for both soil type that can adequately treat wastewater, but also evidence of any historical groundwater. You have to, that is another one of the must-dos from the state, you have to define where groundwater is, or you have to adequately define that you have met the adequate separation requirements. One of the good things that comes from this policy is that your previous vertical separation requirement was seven feet, and that has now been reduced to two feet based on the state policy. So that does give you a little wiggle room in how you're able to design both repairs and new systems and place those on a parcel. Try and find the positive things in state requirements that are imposed on us. Another element that is going to change from your current code is the minimum parcel sizing. Currently, you have the option to go down to 12,500 square feet anytime a septic system is placed on a parcel, and based on OTS policy, should you go with tier one, your requirement would be for a minimum lot size of two and a half acres. Our firm worked with staff in trying to get a good sense of what your parcel splits are like, and I was happy to see that one of the mapping efforts on the agenda this morning was exactly what we talked about, and that's the situation where you have a large, typically a larger ag parcel where you're carving off a home site, and so you're not looking at taking a twenty acre parcel and putting, you know, reducing that down to two acres, you're looking at carving off a home site. So your net density is not going to increase to a level where you're looking to potentially impair water quality. So we have justifiable documentation based on some of the, it's called a Hanchi-Fenimore equation, and we don't need to go into details on that here, but that is something that the state has approved for doing an assessment of what is suitable density on parcels, and because it factors in rainfall and all kinds of things, like I said, that state requirement would have been for two and a half acres, but we feel adequately, but one acre provides for that. Because you do have the option for a reduced parcel size, if you have public water and public sewer, you still, your ordinance still will allow for those 6,000 square feet parcels or 7,000 square feet on a corner lot.
Deal with one acre, we have a lot of one acre parcels.
Just to clarify again, this only applies to creation of new parcels after the adoption of this policy. It only will apply to failures of a septic system after this policy is adopted. It will only apply to installing new systems on a bare parcel after this policy is adopted. So once you, you know, once you have this all in place and approved by the state, that's basically where the time clock starts there for you to follow this criteria. But it's not going to, you know, you're not going to have one acre parcels that have not been developed now that all of a sudden are not developable. That's not at all the intent of this policy.
Is there, I didn't see it in here, and you didn't mention it, I don't think, is there any criteria for one acre parcel minimum for residents? Is there a number of residents where there's a criteria, cuts off where you say then, I have to have an engineered system rather than individual septic fields?
I think if you were going to be in a situation where you were going to...
Say I'm building twenty one acre homes versus forty one acre homes, would there be a criteria where it cuts off and says you can't do that, you must have an engineered system that accommodates all forty now?
I think that that's going to be something that will have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, so.
As we come into those situations in development in our own business.
I think at this point in time, you know, we are in a situation where the state is going to approve the one acre minimum, and what we've advised staff is that just keep detailed records on things, and anything that you can document to justify that you are adequately protecting groundwater quality. So when reporting periods come along, each of those annual reporting periods, and then in your five-year look-back report, you want to ensure that along the way you've collected sufficient information to justify that staff is, and your body are approving things that still prioritize protection of groundwater quality. But I think that that will be something that's a case-by-case evaluation for you.
We have a property in Three Rivers that currently, well, I'll go back a little bit, and twenty years ago it was built, it's a hotel, it was built in an area that is flood plain where its septic is, and it's failed over and over through the years, so now the new owner is actually doing a fix to it, a repair, and the whole thing's dug up, and it looks like they're spending a lot of money to make the situation correct. Is this under the auspices of this, of the state mandate, since he's doing the repair after this was adopted?
No, this has not been adopted. We have a process to go through with your commission approving this plan, it still has to go to your Board of Supervisors, and it has to get on the State Water Resources Control Board Public Hearing Agenda the first week of April before it can be considered approved and in place prior to that May deadline. So anything that's currently permitted is not going to retroactively have to come into compliance with this. If it's been permitted prior to the effective date of this policy, and we still have all of these steps to go through before it's actually formally adopted and approved by the state. So everything that's in place now, I can't speak to somebody that may have information about what this policy requirement is or new alternative types of treatment, but they will not have to, as they're, you know, in the midst of doing a repair, come into compliance. So, and just to make a clarification here, since we're addressing it, your current ordinance is going to be changed to reference alternative systems. So you are not going to, that is one of the things that's going to be deferred to the state, is supplemental treatment systems. We want to be, start thinking in terms of how our terms get perceived by the public, and as soon as you say engineer or engineered system, it sets a panic in the public, and we don't want to get to a point where we've got folks concerned about reporting failures and have public health concerns because people are worried that all of a sudden this new policy is in place, and now we're going to require engineered systems. So that is absolutely not the case. There would only be very extreme situations that would require folks be recommended to the state to go to a supplemental treatment system, and by supplemental treatment I mean disinfection or all the pre-treatment that happens in the septic tank. What you folks will be allowing is alternative systems, which is alternative dispersal, so mound systems, anything in the dispersal field, pressure dose that allows, you know, incremental dosing of affluent, those things are all very clearly spelled out in your proposed ordinance language changes. But that's one of the things that I really strongly urge is that we utilize the terms that are in our approved plan correctly, just because we don't want people being concerned that the county's all of a sudden now requiring everybody have an engineered system.
Ms. McIllopp, you indicated any new installation or repair of a field was going to have to have basically a consultant or an engineer basically come out and review it. Well, that's pretty close to being engineered.
Well, cost-wise, you know, you've got options for somebody that is a Registered Environmental Health Specialist, those are the staff that you currently have in environmental health. I can draw an experience from Butte County because that's what I'm the most familiar with, but we had folks from several surrounding counties, actually one of your water commissioners when I did the presentation, his mother did the soils training for myself and my staff. So you have a network of people that have worked and retired, or they do side jobs, and I think cost-wise, I would always suggest to my public, you know, shop around like you would for a car, don't go with the first estimate you get. So it's not that you always have to go with an engineer, you've got several different disciplines available to you on that qualified professionals list.
Is there an estimate of what this is going to add to the cost of a septic system or a repair on a fatal breach line?
It is going to add cost, I wouldn't be able to speak to that without having conversations with some of your local folks that are, that would fall under that qualified professionals list. But one thing to point out with the soils work, the site evaluation report that is going to be prepared, that will stay with your parcel, that will stay with any parcel for the lifetime of that parcel as long as it stays as it was at the time that the site evaluation was done. If you've got any, you know, major grading or any significant changes to disturb soil prior to a system being installed, then that, you know, it caused some additional work to be done. But once these reports are done, then it'll be useful for the lifetime of that parcel, and that would apply for, you know, if you had a new system go in, if you needed to do a repair down the road, that site evaluation and that information would be there.
So this would have to be, this would be part of, if the property was sold, the certification?
That's correct, and it is, you know, once you have, you know, you have options to have a little wiggle room written into your local plan, or you have tier one of the state policy to come into compliance with, which is much more stringent. But it does end up being a helpful thing, and I know that's really hard to hear when you're in the midst of having a new regulation cram down your throat, but it ends up that, you know, sometimes somebody does a site evaluation and they decide not to develop that parcel, it becomes a selling point, you know, you've already done all of this work, you know that this size system can go on to this parcel, you know, it ends up helping a parcel owner should they decide to sell because that work's already been done.
Through the chair, just as part of this and as she finishes her presentation, there will be a guidance manual that will be developed and coordinated with the consultant, and there will be some process changes. There potentially will be requirements for the site evaluation as part of the parcel map piece, so that might be something that we might be looking at in the future. But there is an added cost, we're trying to put that on, not the county at this time because we don't have the staff or the expertise to do that, so we're just going to have this list of qualified professionals that we'll get a report from them, and we'll review that and accept that or not accept that. But there is an added cost, but like Kristen said, that the alternative is even stricter. So we're forced to do this, and this is better to keep some local control and some ability to have some variances and to be able to do that on our own rather than just go strict by their guidelines of two and a half acre minimums and all of that, so.
No, we're Tulare County, but there's Kings County, Kern County, Fresno County, we're really kind of all one. Are all the counties on board on this, are they all seeking your guidance to develop similar?
Yeah, most have already in the San Joaquin Valley. We're at the tail end, and we have that deadline of May to come into compliance, otherwise by default we go to the tier one state standard. That's why we're pushing this through at this time to get it approved, and, but yes, most of the counties already have.
Just in full disclosure, we're not working with all of the San Joaquin Basin, but we are working with Fresno County. And Fresno County has taken an approach similar to yours, they've got, they have some differences in their program, but they are also following Plumbing Code as their basic guidance structure for their land document. So this is just a quick touch on what is going to be done during a site evaluation. Again, the big criteria for the state is to define where groundwater level is, but also to look at soil characteristics and basically make a determination on an application rate and how that soil is going to be able to receive and treat affluent.
That's not your hand holding that stuff, is it?
It's soil, I have to point out, it's soil, so, yeah, we get to, you know, play in the mud and mud pies. As Mike mentioned, I know this is a lot to digest now, and because we're on a timeline, it seems, you know, we're pushing this all through, but Northstar is also going to continue working with you, provide training and outreach. I know Fresno County, I met with them yesterday morning, and they also want to include all of their planning staff in training, and so we can customize training for any of your needs, and staff can help make that determination on who's interested and who needs training. But we will be going through significant training, and nobody's going to be kind of set loose to fend for themselves. There will be assistance that's custom tailored for your needs based on, you know, how to educate the public, how to educate your staff, educate your contractors, all your requirements for compliance, you know, how fees will, you know, cover compliance with all of this, and so that will be forthcoming for you guys, but please let us know if there's anything else that we can do for you. else that we can do for you.
It must be difficult in Chico because you have a lot of caps.
We, there are a significant, there's, you know, a lot of rural areas in Butte County. There are mountainous areas, there's high variability in soils there, even in the areas where in Chico, there is sewer in some of the places. The north portion of Chico is under a prohibition order from the regional board, and so there are very strict requirements for allowing repairs or additions to a house and increasing waste loading. And so, we've had some, you know, we've had some challenges navigating compliance with the state. And so, I'm confident that you're working with the right team to help you navigate working with the state. So, this may be of, you know, no interest to you about the difference between trenches and seepage pits, but seepage pits are something that will not be allowed as an option for new systems, but that is an alternative that is allowed under the OTS policy for repairs, which, you know, in certain situations, any alternative you can get when you have a parcel where somebody's already got their landscaping done, they've got a pool in, and they're trying to navigate tough soils and meeting those separation requirements. Your maximum trench depth is only going to be 10 feet, and that restriction is in place because of trying to meet that separation and protection of groundwater. You are going to be required to designate 100% replacement area. Anytime you do go through a mapping effort, that is something that's going to be defined. The policy does allow for some alternatives in materials to be used, as long as they are IATMO or NSF approved, and that's something that's already part of your current policy. Septic tanks are, you're going to have to comply with a requirement to demonstrate water tightness. And so, this is going to be a slight change in an inspection process in that you have to have risers that are visible, accessible, close to grade, and you have to demonstrate that they are watertight, which is something that's, it's an easy compliance thing to demonstrate protection of water quality. So, typically, it's a 24-hour tightness test where you fill the tank two inches into the risers, come back and inspect that in 24 hours. But, it is a change, it's another staffing change. Effluent screens are now going to be required for all tanks, just to prevent solids from going out into your leach field. Your installers that install systems, there is a requirement now, and your local plan follows tier one requirement, that you verify that systems are being installed by licensed contractors.
But, with the limited 10-foot on the trenches, then these larger bore leach lines aren't going to be legal anymore, is that right?
You are going to have the option to do the boring seepage pits on repairs, but that's not going to be an option for your brand-new system. So, it would only be, you know, kind of as a last resort. And the reason is that you still have to prove separation to groundwater, you have to prove that 10-foot separation of groundwater. So, in those situations where you're going to drill a seepage pit, you're going to actually have to drill core drill all the way down until you hit groundwater to demonstrate that you are actually 10 feet above groundwater.
You can't go to a well right next to it and that's got standing water at 160 feet and say that's where the groundwater is?
You're still going to want to meet separation requirements, so you're, you know, you're still going to have to...
Well, that's what I said. If you've got a well on the site and your standing water is 160 feet in the well, and why do you have to go 100 feet away and drill down to groundwater again?
It's a state policy requirement. I think that, you know, there are, there's latitude for state to, or for staff to do evaluations on a parcel-by-parcel basis. You know, if you've got enough, you know, if a well just went in and staff feels comfortable in being able to justify to the state that they reviewed a site, there are options for coming up with variances on certain, you know, situations, as long as staff can document and justify to the state that there's been a provision for adequate protection of groundwater quality, then I think that, you know, they can make those considerations on a case-by-case But, as far as policy goes, that's what the policy is. As I mentioned before, anything that requires supplemental treatment is going to be referred to the regional board at this time. Trying to pull, this presentation was very in-depth for the water commission, so I'm just trying to pull out some of the major changes for you guys. Another component of the policy is a requirement for a water quality assessment program. And that was not prescriptive, and so, that's something that, as a local agency, you can define what that water quality assessment program is going to be. And at this time, Tulare County is going to access all publicly available information, rather than starting a new program or new requirements for, you know, new wells being drilled or anything. They will access and assess currently available public information for public water systems, community water systems, the CV salts program, and there are, the state is also working on several basin plan changes in Tulare and San Joaquin. And Sacramento are all in the midst of doing those plan updates. So, unless the state makes that change after the next five-year hurdle, there are not going to be any new implementation of program for water quality assessment. There are several tables included in your lamp that are either from plumbing code or from the OTS policy directly. Any of those, I'm not sure how you present that information, but if anybody's interested, that information can be provided. I've already talked ahead of myself, so we've covered all of that. So, I don't know if anybody else has any other questions before I turn it back to staff.
Thank you.
Aaron Bach again, chief planner. So, I mean, that was a lot of information to digest, and we appreciate you doing the heavy lifting for us today. Just to wrap this thing up, as stated, there are going to be inconsistencies with our zoning moving forward, as far as the limited acreage size. Generally, with our home sites, it's not going to be a problem. But, when we get down into some of these urban development boundaries, we will have lots that were less than one acre or are being proposed at less than one acre potentially, and this would be a limitation. So, that would be inconsistent. As far as the policies that have been provided so far, those are consistent with our general plan, as we do have the power to regulate these things. But, again, Kristen discussed the expectations of the applicants and the agents. So, we're going to have to do a lot of education as we go through this process, and we're going to get up to date as quickly as possible moving forward, so there aren't any hiccups in streamlined business model we have as far as getting economic development projects approved through the county. Future actions, obviously, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board's going to have to approve our lamp immediately. This is a recommendation today, not an approval, but immediately, the board of supervisors will make future similar recommended ordinance code changes. That was provided to you in the attachment three, was the ordinance code changes. And this project, the state did one nice thing for us here, and they are exempting this program from SEQA. And so, with that, I have two motions before you. That completes staff's presentation. Hopefully, you got most of the questions squared away. But, like I said, this is a public hearing, so if we can open up the public hearing.
At this time, we will open the public hearing portion, so if there's anybody else who would like to comment, your chance. Doesn't appear, so we can close the public hearing and move on to the recommendation. Anybody wants to make that recommendation?
I'll recommend that the board of supervisors find that the Tulare County Local Agency Management Program for On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems is part of the state's regulatory program and is exempt from SEQA.
Second?
Second.
Song?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
And then I'll recommend that the board of supervisors approve the Tulare County Local Agency Management Program lamp, including required amendments to the ordinance code consistent with the State Water Resource Control Board's adoption, adopted OWTS policy.
Second step.
Vote?
Song?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes. Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair. I'd like a five-minute senior citizen break.
We'll have to recuse ourselves again, right? Okay, so it's 10:20, we'll start up at 10:25.
But, we have to recuse ourselves, so.
On this one? Is this Nagra?
Yeah, I've been sick for a month, almost a month. No, but when I was off, I was babysitting my granddaughter, my daughter.
Okay, we shall reconvene here, and I think there's some folks that need to recuse themselves.
Well, what are we doing here? Bach, what's next?
A, 6A, final site number on Nagra and Gurdav Nagra.
Yes, sir. I will recuse myself.
I will also recuse myself.
Goodness.
Better know.
At least four of us.
Oh, that's fine. I wasn't here.
Okay, this is a final site plan number PSR 17-006, and it's a continued public hearing.
It is, thank you. And this was continued from December, and the reason was because Nancy wasn't here.
Well, I just got that from up here.
Thanks for reinforcing, yeah.
This project is a final site plan for signage only on this site. It's categorically exempt from SEQA pertaining to Section 15303, new construction. And entitlement is found in Section 11. If this, this is the C1 zone, and because it has the SR overlay, it requires the final site plan review. Project was noticed according to the law, and we did receive one comment from the Family Healthcare Center, which is located adjacent to this site. And several weeks ago, they just really were inquiring about what the project was. And also, last time in December, when we had this initially self-help did festify, and they were just concerned about lighting that might impact the subdivision to the south. And these are the policies that the project is consistent with. And this is the vicinity map. It's in Goshen on Rigan Avenue. This is the zoning. This is the aerial photo. This is the site plan. And what the applicant is requesting is one 25-foot-tall high-rise digital price sign, one 35-foot-tall high-rise pylon-type sign, and two monument signs no greater than eight feet high. And here is a facsimile of the price sign, a facsimile of the high-rise sign, and the monument sign. And that concludes staff's report, and staff is recommending that you approve the categorical exemption and the final site plan PSR 17006.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Excuse me, I do have a question, and I did go back and look at all the paperwork on this. After the concern about the lighting for the housing, was that adjusted? Were the signs adjusted?
The signs aren't adjusted, but there is a wall between this site and the subdivision to the south. And we also had the condition where lighting will be down shielded as well.
Okay, yes.
The down shielded, is that in the condition?
Also, for the record through the chair, what self-help had originally looked at too was an original proposal that included more signs than what is actually in this proposal. This has been reduced, the number of signs have been reduced since their first look at it, yeah.
So, it has been adjusted, okay. It's been adjusted, two signs less.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing if there's anybody else that would like to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rick Judge. I'm from 1007 Bainsborough Court from Bakersfield. I'm the developer for the client on the project, and first and foremost, I want to say thank you for the board of supervisors for allowing us to be here and speak on this project on behalf of the client today. And I'm just here to answer any questions, but also just kind of clarify what is happening here. The site has been originally approved to develop for a retail facility. It is something that is definitely needed in the city of Goshen, not only creating good commercial development, but also a great opportunity for job growth in the area. And these are standard signages which are required for the business to operate. Digital gas sign, obviously, to allow the gas station to present its prices to its customer base when they're traveling up and down Betty Drive. A standard pylon sign, which allow the shopping center as a whole to give the retail centers that, the retail space that's going to be leasing on this center, to advertise their names. And then, just a few small monuments, as you see right there, because obviously, not every single tenant can fit on the big board sign. And as Steph mentioned as well, we, the client didn't take into consideration some concerns and did reduce signage, and also made sure that all lighting does meet code requirement. And illumination is going on street side, nothing's facing residential. And if you look at the overall site plan as well, there is a future building which actually backs up, parallel to the block wall where the residents are. So, not only do you have that building blocking lighting coming in, it's also facing the street side, nothing facing the residential side. So, again, I'm here for any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the four of us
I make a motion that we approve categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970 as amended pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve final site plan number PSR 17-006.
I'll second.
A vote?
Song?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Tigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
We were waiting on the other commissioners to rejoin us.
They're back there having donuts, isn't he?
Okay, we will continue with item six B, which is a surface mining permit and reclamation plan number PMR one five dash zero zero one.
Chairman Aguilar Aronbach, Chief Planner, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Commissioners, before you today is the Culver Mine Mining and Reclamation Permit. This is PMR fifteen dash zero zero one. The applicants are Mitch Brown and James Winton and Associates. The request is for approval of the environmental impact report and the mining permit in two motions. The site is on a thirty-seven point one-four acre site over two APNs. The existing use is generally, there's really no existing use. The proposed use is for a surface sand mine for fifty years to a depth of thirty-five feet from the existing surface contours, and the end use after reclamation will be dry land farming. The location is southwest of the city of Porterville, as you can see on this vicinity Those two accessory parcels I discussed in the noticing was under the laws of California, three hundred feet. Obviously, that included quite a, quite large parcels. The site itself, as I stated, was thirty-seven point one-four acres. This is adjacent to the Tulare County mining facilities directly to the east. This is along the old Deer Creek Route, River Bed. Some of the site photos, you can see on the right side, that's the county's mining facility. As you can see from the north and south, photos, fairly flat site, but it does depress slightly towards the middle of the project site already. Some other site photos, we'll go, we'll start with this one. This is actually a picture looking north. Some of that area's been disced over time, but you can see that, sorry to be get, beginning to gradually slope towards the center of the project. This picture here is pretty much from the middle of the site looking south, no, looking eastward, westward, where you can see out towards the old facilities that used to be out there, I believe it was a turkey ranch. So you can see some of the, again, very flat site with no distinguishable features. The picture here, you can see how much the site's already depressed, moving into the old Deer Creek bed. And this, this picture here is looking northward. Again, you can see some pre-existing disking, and the site does depress gradually from both edges of the property. This was a phased site plan in two phases. The initial phase will not, obviously, use the whole site. It'll be starting from the east side of the property, moving westward, and then similarly on the second phase, it will continue to build out the entire, the entire project area. And these are just some plans and profiles getting to the thirty-five feet. As you can see, it's from, as I stated, from the existing, existing contours. That's not the, from the top of slope, the thirty-five-feet depth. And this is a fairly good depiction of the site, includes all the buffer areas, the proposed actual mining area, but the reclamation board still wants a better graphic when we're done, and the project's been approved to achieve that, or recommended to approve to achieve that. So the project itself is a sand mining operation with a maximum throughput of ninety-three, ninety-four thousand cubic yards, seventy-five thousand tons per year, one point five million cubic yards, one point two million tons of mineral commodities, sand, to be removed over the fifty-year project life. There's twenty-nine thousand cubic yards, twenty-three thousand, two hundred tons of waste or overburden to be retained on-site to be used as part of the reclamation process. So they're recycling the dirt on-site. Mining to a maximum depth of thirty-five feet to mean sea level three hundred and ninety feet. The project itself is, normal operations would occur Monday through Saturday and not to exceed thirteen possible Sundays a year, from sunrise to sunset, typically six AM to six PM, depending on seasonal and economic factors. The on-site use of standard industry equipment includes dozers, excavators, loaders, water trucks, and a screening plant. The transported material is in dump trucks and trailers, side bottom dump and transfer with capacities ranging from eight to thirty cubic yards, which is six point four to twenty-four tons. Three thousand one hundred and twenty estimated annual trips for hauling of finished material, commodities, sand, assuming twelve round trips, twenty-four one-way per day, which is a condition of approval for the project, for two hundred and sixty working days per year, and the reclamation plan of the project site to open space capable of supporting dry land farming. This project is consistent with our general plan. Zoning in the AE twenty allows the surface, allows surface mining with the condition, with the surface mining permit. The general plan itself designates the site as MRZ three, which are areas known, with known mineral deposits that may qualify as mineral resources, obviously, sand. So in regards to the environmental impact report, the comments that we did receive were as early as the NOP stage from the Air District, which was helpful. Those comments were incorporated into the EIR, in which they had no further comments after reviewing the draft EIR. NAHC comments regarding cultural resources were included in the final EIR, and they had no further comments. Caltrans comments, project's fair share is estimated to be seven thousand eight hundred dollars for a signal at Stranton, Newcombe, and also SR one ninety. Division of Reclamation had no comments to the EIR but wanted rec-plan to meet new guidelines, and I attached that memo through the agenda for conditions for DMR, and those were from December of two thousand seventeen. We did get two phone calls, one from the neighbor to the north, had concerns about the maintenance of the roadway, which was worked out with the owner, with the applicant, and neighbor to the south had concerns about lighting. We've been assured that there would not be lighting on-site. The environmental impact report, SCH number two fifteen one 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 zero four three. All interested parties were given notice of the NOP, the scoping meeting, with no responses except from the agencies discussed. The DIR was released on June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. The NOAA was noticed in the newspaper of public record and the Porterville and Terabilla libraries. All resources, cumulative effects, and alternatives were analyzed, and this project was found to be the environmentally superior alternative with mitigation measures as required by law. Those mitigation measures include for biological resources, pre-construction surveys, minimization and avoidance measures were included. For cultural resources, measures require work stoppage and reporting if resources are found, and the traffic mitigations are a stop sign at the driveway and Road two two four prior to twenty forty. Applicant also prior to twenty forty applicant will enter into agreement with Caltrans for their prorated share for the traffic improvements on Newcombe and Scranton, and potentially SR one ninety in Newcombe. Reclamation plan comments, we have conditioned this project that no work will begin until the reclamation plan is approved by DMR. That includes the financial assurances preliminary. That estimate's been okayed, but we'll wait for their final approval. DMR recommended that the lead agency clarify the site. It was plain to us, but I guess they didn't see it the way we did, so we will clarify further the exact project compared to those parcels. It calls for a final and topo depicting with contour lines, are a little bit symbolic in the reclamation plan itself, so those will be exact. According to the Division Dogger, there was four plugged wells on-site. A condition has been added that permits to modify the abandoned wells would be obtained subject to a decision to complete mining within fifty feet of the well. That will be verified on an annualized basis with the annual report that goes to the state, that we do inspections annually. And then prior to the reclamation plan being approved, the plan shall be changed and resubmitted to the Division of Mine Reclamation to show that the property's use will be open space adaptable to agricultural uses. So that satisfied DMR, and they had no further comments as of last week. So with that, that's complete Steph's report. There is a slew of consultants and the applicants themselves here to discuss. Any questions you may have about this project? It's obviously a substantial project, and we've been working on it for the last two years. This is a public hearing.
Questions up here?
Aaron, I just got a little question here. I'm kind of looking at the aerial on this thing here, and it's not real clear with this one, because it's a little bit hazy, but this looks like it was an old river.
Yes, Deer Creek.
It's still, oh, it's still Deer, so it's still running?
No, no, old, old. Non-existing anymore Deer Creek, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, because it's like they're farming around it and stuff. And then, and I couldn't tell, and I can't tell from there, but is this already below grade?
Yes. The pictures I showed, show it gradually coming down from the edges towards the center of the park.
All those, I didn't know if that was what they were proposing to do.
No, that's what exists now.
That's what it exists now.
So the, the, the old river kind of cut its own bed that's a little bit lower, and they never changed the.
And there's, there's no water.
No water flow.
Certain water flow going on there. Okay, all right, that's starting to.
Not that we are aware.
I couldn't tell from the photos what was happening here. It was an old riverbed. So then we're just taking the existing.
Sand.
And out of that.
Right, but the county had a good idea, so Mitch is just following up on it.
Okay. All right, well, that's kind of shed some light on it. The photos were not clear to me.
I'll, I'll work on that.
Was that river rechanneled there, the, I mean Deer Creek?
I, I would think it's mostly natural. In my experience, the Army Corps of Engineers, though, has not declared jurisdiction over Deer Creek. So to me, that means it's not naturally flowing, but.
If, through the chair, if you look at figure two in your packet, it, you can see on the south side, the Deer Creek ditch, so I'm assuming that's where it was diverted through that area.
I got you.
Looping up into the photo, is that what you're talking about?
The very south end. Well, I don't know if, I don't know if he has it in this photo. It's in your packet on the.
No, I don't. In the packet, figure two, down at the bottom, that's Deer Creek that loops up into the bottom of the photo.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, at this time, we will open public comment. If there's somebody who wants to address, please state your name and address.
Good morning, I am Mitch Brown. I am the applicant, and my business address is at fourteen two hundred, Road two eighty-four in Porterville. So I am here to answer any questions. I have quite a few people that have worked on our project, so if you have any questions or anything, we, we're here to answer, and I think we can answer the rest of anything.
What's the, your depth of groundwater there?
It's very deep. It's way past what we're going, and I don't think the site will go to thirty-five feet deep. It doesn't appear that it did on the county side. I've put that in there because there, there is some underneath it, it'll undulate some, and so I just want to be, can never, you don't want to go back and ask that question later. You don't want to come.
My question is, that's an old riverbed, and even though it's filled in and they're farming at the top, is it still flowing, does it still flow underneath there?
No. It has changed, best I can tell, I looked into that, changed about a hundred years ago, changed the path further south. It's probably two miles south of here now, and it changed about, oh, two miles to three miles above this location, and it, and it just changed its path approximately a hundred years ago, and now flows more south and westerly than it did back in those days. There's absolutely no water, no chance of it ever getting there. Highway sixty-five has been built through there, highway, the old Highway sixty-five is through there. There's been many, many changes and improvements. Obviously, it's going to get into the county pit that's uphill from that. If any water ever comes down, they've dug quite a, a hole there now, and so anything gets down even remotely close to us should pond and stay east of us by quite a bit.
Well, that's the majority of that material there is all sand anyway, right?
Yeah, so what's happened over the years, it's the old, it was a turkey ranch at one time, so the people at Culvers that wanted me to come in and take a look at it is, nobody's been able to farm it. There's, you know, depth of sand somewhere between, you know, to, up to thirty-five feet, and the water percolates so fast that they don't even farm that portion of it. It's so porous, and they can't put enough water on it, even dry land in it right now. So our goal is to take the sand, remove the sand, take the topsoil, regrade the bottom of it, and make it fit to the farming that's there now, and just bring the slopes in and just make it so that the entire piece, when we get done with it, would be farmable as opposed to just the pieces on the north and the south banks of it.
So you don't bring dirt back in?
No, it's, we'll actually take it out, and then we'll probably just bring the side slopes down a little bit more and reshape it to make it so that a tractor can get over it and stuff, and you can dry land farm it still. And, and I, I'm not going to have, just in the, you know, for the meeting today, I'm not going to have a guard dog, and we can actually help you in your, your septic system because we can design the septic ground now using the sand and some dirt. We can, we can design your septic systems for you.
So win-win.
See what you learn when you have to sit through all the other.
It's pretty, it's pretty interesting to be actually, so.
And through the chair, the depth of groundwater out there is generally around the three hundred foot contour. There might be an exception for this location, but it's, it's fairly deep out there.
Still have to engineer your septic tanks out there, though.
We're using a porta potty just to be on the safe side.
Good idea.
Any other questions?
Pretty straightforward. You're a good operator, so.
You know, I thank you very much. I've recently also purchased desert aggregates from Granite Construction, so I will now have, I think, eight permits in Tulare County, including this one, and so far, no violations. I try to do my job. I'm a good neighbor to everybody. You know, we try to work, we have twelve or fifteen different agencies in the state and federal levels that keep an eye on us, so I don't, I don't get to do anything wrong, so, and I appreciate that.
The Culvers, Culvers is going to continue to own the property, or did you buy the property?
Yes, no, I will pay them a royalty, so they will make money off of their property until I've mined it out and, and, and help them.
So you're going to fix it for them, so they can farm it?
That's exactly what, what our plan is. Yes, it is.
I've known, I mean, since I've been on the commission for eighteen-plus years, we have never had a complaint against your operation.
We, not you, we've, we've fielded a few of them on our end, for sure, you know, but isn't that right? I think the staff could, could appreciate that. We've, we've fielded, I've fielded a few on our end, but we've always been able to take, take those and.
You weren't supposed to admit to that.
Huh?
You weren't supposed to admit to that.
Yeah, you know, hey, you can't do this without having a couple, so. I've been around a long time, thank goodness, and, and I've been blessed, well blessed, with all of the good neighbors and able to supply. I, right now, have, the last one that we got is the Wilcox, and it has a hundred million tons in it, so we'll be, our plan is to keep going. It has about a two-hundred-year life source, so I'm, this is just going to add to more of that that I've developing and the purchasing of desert aggregates that'll continue on. We supply a lot of building materials in Tulare, Tulare Kings, Fresno County, we're getting as far as north as Fresno because of their, they don't have as much material. We go into Kern County, so we supply a lot of materials to a lot of places, so do a lot of building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to write testimony, or? Is there anyone else who would like to write testimony or? You just had support here then, in case. Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing and we'll listen to the recommendation one more time and go from there.
Request that the planning commission take the following action in two motions. Certify and adopt the final environmental impact report, SCH number 2015-111-043, as being adequate and in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines. Adopt the SEQA findings and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for mining permit number 15-001 and conditionally approve mining permit number PMR 15-001.
Two, two motions?
Two motions.
Two motions.
Okay.
I'll certify, approve, or recommend that we approve the certification and adoption final environmental impact report and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for PMR 15-001 as presented in item one by Mr. Bach.
I'll second that. Revote?
Gong?
Yes.
Phillies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
I'll make the next motion, we conditionally approve mining permit number PMR 15-001.
Second to.
Gong?
Yes.
Phillies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just as a sad note on the side, James Winton passed away.
No.
In December, was it right Mitch?
Right around Christmas.
I had some work with him on another project and he suddenly was taken to the hospital, passed away, so that's sad news for a fellow that's been in this business a long time in the Porterville area.
Lot of time here too.
Lot of time here, so you all know him.
Just sitting here thinking, interesting that he wasn't sitting back there. I was thinking, where is he?
He actually.
Wait for him to come step up.
Yes.
Represented by many people that have known him and know that owns his office for him now. Yeah.
What did he do?
Yeah, December, early December.
What did he do?
Cancer. He was full of cancer.
Will be missed by the industry.
We lost a huge amount of knowledge there, didn't we?
He did all the engineering on my home up in Springville, actually, and did a heck of a job. It was a tough job. He's pretty, pretty talented fellow.
Okay, so we're on to item number seven, the director's report.
Thank you, just to touch on a couple things and, and I know it's been a long meeting already, but I've got the new Sequoia Tourism Visitor Guide that I'll give, hand out to you guys. And then I also have, I know that we're starting to do a lot more biogas facilities where we're clustering dairies and stuff. Tonight, there's a, there's an outreach meeting down at Larry Campus of COS regarding some, some proposed projects there as well. There's another round that we're, we're, county was very successful in the projects that were being developed in the county in obtaining grants. I believe we received 13 out of 18 grants statewide for these dairy digester clusters and many, many millions of dollars went to the local developers. Well, there's a second round of grants. I, I believe the, the deadline is the end of this month for submission of the applications there. So some developers, Fort Creeks is, is the agent on, on some other projects and so they're holding an outreach at Larry Campus of COS. Information, kind of talking about it, so I just pass that out for your information. Three Rivers Community Plans, the, the draft DIR was released and is available online and we'll look to having a public meeting probably the first, I believe it's the first evening of, first Monday of February up in the community. And ultimately, there'll probably be, there, there very well likely be multiple, maybe two meetings or more before it actually comes to your commission preparation. More than likely sometime in April, I would hope if everything moves along right, you'd probably consider it in April. As well as the Goshen Community Plan, that draft should be out next 45 days to 60 days. We should get that out on the street and then again in April or May, we'll probably have that before your commission. As part of that, we're looking at some procedures that we're, we do with the noticing and stuff. Where I'm going to implement a new procedure for, when we're issuing a notice of availability, which is basically saying, hey, there's an environmental impact report, we'll, we publish in the newspaper and we give to anybody that commented at the scoping meeting and other agencies. At this point, I'm going to instruct staff to forward those copies on to all the commissioners so you have a very early look at it. If, if you request or require a hard copy of the document, generally what we do is we send out to all those people that comment, because you know, you, you see the size of these documents. Normally, we, we have them posted online on our website, so there's links to it, but the general public can, can come in and purchase a hard copy of, I think it's five cents a page or something like that. It still runs up to over 100 bucks on some of these things. So, but we include it as part of your packet. If, if a commissioner is interested at early on, we can create a hard copy of that for your, for your own use and we'll just won't duplicate it when it comes time for the meeting. That way, we're not destroying as many trees, saving as many trees as possible. So I just want to, we'll, we'll start that implementation for any notice of availability or for notices of intent to adopt, which are for the mitigating nake decks and, and nake decks. So we'll get those out early to you and that way, if you have any questions or want to look at those documents, you have a longer period of time to, to review it because there's a lot of, a lot of information in there, so. And with that, I, that's all I've got for, for today.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add.
I just wanted to go on record as saying that with regards to the Three Rivers Plan, the environmental document is 1,170 pages. There's one copy of it in Three Rivers, so I, as a commissioner, I'm requesting a copy and that I could certainly share with people through the community, but this is a little different kind of project and my only concern was when it was issued on the 29th, there was no instructions on how to comment at that time and I think, you know, Mike and I have talked about this, so I think we need to just clarify that process so people know immediately what the proper channels are to comment when you do have a release like, especially one of this magnitude, where both documents is, I think, close to 1,400 pages, so. It's a big undertaking for Three Rivers. It's, we've been working on the plan out there for 20 years. We haven't had a general plan update since 1980, so this is an important one and as all of you know, the people in Three Rivers, they're going to comment on this and they'll be involved in the process, so I just wanted to say and go on record that.
I thought you were going to go on the record to say out of the 1,170 pages, there was one page you didn't agree with.
No, I, I'm not in, I'm certainly in agreement with doing a environmental document for the plan, but I, what I do need is a hard copy of that, an extra hard copy in Three Rivers and I'd like to have one.
We'll get you a hard copy and just, just for clarification, information purposes. And, and again, I will say that some of this stuff is antiquated because of the newspaper publication, so, but for an environmental impact report such as, as the Three Rivers Plan, the notice of availability is open for, it's a 45-day review period. It's published in, in this case, it's published by Setta Times Delta. Most of our publications are in the Viseite Times Delta. It's sent to the local libraries, hard copy sent to local libraries. It's published on our website for being able to link to it and to be able to view it there. It's sent to the state clearinghouse and the state, and we send multiple copies to, not hard copies, but electronic copies. They submit that out to all of the responsible agencies, so they send it out to about 11 to 20 agencies for their comment. We also, as part of the notice of preparation, early on, as at the very start of the process, when we, we hold a scoping meeting and, and, and in this case, there's multiple community meetings before, before we got to the scoping meeting, but at the scoping meeting, any, any person that attends the scoping meeting or provides comments during the, the notice of prep review period, the 30-day review period, or any interested party that has, has talked to or commented about the plan, they also were notified directly of the accessibility of the draft with the links to, direct links to the site. So that's kind of the process and I, I understand readership and, and that, and, and the requirements for that, it does seem very antiquated, but those are the legal parameters of that. But again, we do want to be as transparent as possible and that's why we'll hold multiple meetings up in Three Rivers regarding this, which aren't legally required, but we will do that and we will publicize that the best that we can.
John, is there a library?
We have a library with limited hours up there and there is a copy there.
There is a copy there.
There is, one of the problems up in Three Rivers and several people have called my office and said that they don't have enough bandwidth to open that 1,170-page document and we are an underserved rural area when it comes to internet and part of the problem is, is we have a lot of users up there, but not enough bandwidth, so this is why we need at least another copy up there for people to review and I'm going to have that in terms of office hours for people to come in and look at.
How, how often is the, and this is just a question regarding the, the memorial building, is that open during certain hour, regular hours or that is only?
Well, it's open, it's open anytime, but it has to be contracted for the time, you know, because there's maintenance costs and like the meetings.
I know, I know, we hold our meetings there. I'm just trying to think of another public location. We'll sometimes do a, potentially a post office, we could maybe get another one.
Well, the, the Community Services District Office is a possibility too. But there, you know, they, and they have some hours where they're not there, but they're open, you know, business hours, most is. So that's another, but I think that, you know, this is really an important piece of work and you guys got it out and got it on your deadline, but I think now it's time to, you know, disseminate the information.
Right, and, and, and again, as the process goes, the 45-day review period is, is the legal review of the, the notice of availability for people to comment, but in reality, that comment period includes up to and through your planning commission meeting as well as the board of supervisors meeting. So there will be additional public noticing for each of those public hearings, there will be two public hearings, so there's, there will be, this will be an extended, long-term process through the beginning and hopefully concluding sometime in the spring, but throughout this time, there will be additional noticing, additional meetings and, and public hearings and, and availability of people to comment up to and through all of those meetings.
Well, I know, I tried to call and get, I never got a, a phone call returned after the 28th and I guess everybody was on vacation, so they got it done.
Unfortunately, in, in that situation, we, we need to have staff do a better job. If you shoot emails, they don't fall through the cracks. Unfortunately, you know, it was a big rush to, to meet the deadline and, and, and some of the, I was out of the area during the holidays, but staff worked through their holiday time and all this to make the thing and apparently when, you know, oftentimes Dave is still out this week, he'll be back on Tuesday, you know, if he missed, it was like the last day and if he just, if you just miss a, a, a voice message, oftentimes it doesn't get, you know, it's, it's just there. So when you shoot emails and you copy multiple planners, it, things will, won't slip through the cracks.
And so the commission knows, Dave might have been, not been there, but Susan Simon was there, April Hill was there, Dana Metlin was there, Jessica Willis was there, so yeah, if one person's out of the office, please direct your attention elsewhere because somebody will answer your phone calls and I believe if Susan was contacted, she would have responded very quickly to you.
I also have available to the county access to something called ESRA and so as you're looking at communities to bring businesses in, I can give you demographics and psychographics like you probably have never seen before because we use it in our business and it's widely used. I like doing it only because it makes me more proficient at it, but there's probably 10 or 12 different reports that identify what people's spending habits are, what the surrounding businesses are. It all comes from the Census Bureau, projects growth and in the commercial real estate business, it's widely accepted as somewhat of the gospel, so it's available. You just have to call, tell me what you're looking for.
Well, and also for the commission's benefit, Susan Simon does a lot of our production work, so if you get ahold of her, you're, you're bound to get a copy of what, whatever it is. All right.
She's very good, she's very helpful, so.
Very helpful.
Good, good employee.
Anything else?
Oh, just let me know when that copy's ready and we'll pick it up. You don't have to use the poster.
I have a copy for you here.
Oh, you do?
There you go.
Okay.
On top of things.
I see I get the hand truck treatment.
So what? You let him complain this whole time?
What?
They already did?
Yeah.
Oh, I must have been reading it. I didn't hear it.
I just mentioned that we, that's the new one for this year, so.
Okay.
The county participates in the Sequoia Tourism Council and contributes into creating those visitor guides.
Great photos.
Great photos.
They'll be, will be, our tourism people will be attending, I think, a tourism show down in San Diego promoting Tulare County as well, be there with the National Park as well as some other tourism councils with a booth to promote travel to Tulare. And upcoming ones will be, I believe, in Long Beach and then in San Jose. So we usually hit about three tourism, California tourism shows to encourage visitation in our area.
When is the San Diego?
I think San Diego is this weekend. If I, if it's not this weekend, it's next week. They're, all three are kind of clustered in the January, February time period. That seems to be when people like to go look at those things to plan summer vacations and whatnot, so, so we hit those in, in this time of year, the three shows.
Okay, then we'll call it a day.